Mr. Cortez.
Here.
Mr. Garda.
Here.
Mrs. Grossman. Mr. Morella.
Here.
Mr. New Power. Mrs. Panzera.
Here.
Mrs. Petrelli.
Here.
Mr. Stevenson. Mr. Vincini. Here. Mr. Kerr.
Here.
We all stand for a moment of silent meditation, followed by the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I trust everybody has had the opportunity to read the minutes of last month's meeting, and entertain a motion to accept them. Any questions on it, comments? Motion for part of the record?
I need a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. A second?
Second.
Mrs. Petrelli, I'm sorry. Thanks, Richard.
All in favor, I assume.
We have other visitors at this time. Could you please state your name and any questions or comments for the board?
Yes, my name is Matthew Blaine. I'm here on behalf of Friday Night Tykes, 17 Enterprises, for the location agreement item number thirty-seven.
Okay.
Just here to answer any questions. You guys may have.
All right. Does anybody have any questions? Scott.
Setson Fan. Nice to see you again. Just calling up from our meeting on Monday. I'm very excited about the opportunity.
Thank you. And then, one more?
Rob DiMano. No questions.
Okay. Thank you. Superintendent's report. Mr. Panzera.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just some dates, some things that are occurring coming up here as the school year is getting ready to start. Today, we had a kindergarten orientation for roughly a hundred and twenty and over kindergartners. It stopped by, even though there was no floor officially down there, it still was, it was in place and ran very smooth. I want to thank the PTO for helping organize that whole process and the staff that was there and everybody that put on a successful kindergarten orientation. It's a class of twenty, twenty-eight.
Oh, my gosh.
So... Seventh grade orientation is coming up, August eighteenth at six p.m. in the auditorium where we introduce the parents and students to the Lincoln here that night. Student schedules can still be picked up until tomorrow by two p.m. Any left will be mailed home for those who would love to pick them up here at the high school. Something pretty exciting next week, August seventeenth to the twenty-first. We have our dyslexia pilot training. We were lucky enough to get that grant. It'll be at Hartman for kindergarten staff and all the support staff and help that goes along with that. There's gonna be about thirty-eight total staff members there, some from Bentworth School District Two who are also receiving the grant. It's gonna be done by Southern Mississippi University, who specializes in the DuBard Association method for dyslexias. And a lot of the TAN consultants who work with special ed out of Pittsburgh. So, we'll be hosting that event here all week over at Hartman. So, that's pretty exciting for us. And then, August twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth will be Teacher in Service Day. And then, August twenty-sixth, whether we're ready or not, the kids will be here. So, those are the upcoming things that are happening.
Thank you. Before we go on, on behalf of the board, I'd like to issue a statement of clarity about the grill softball field at Stiefel Park. The Elwood City School Board is very grateful to the Elwood City Borough and Borough Council. They've always been very cooperative and generous in the past, allowing us to use their facilities. And we are grateful for that. And any problems we have, they have always cooperated, helped us take care of them, and I'm sure we'll come to a solution with our grill softball facility at Stiefel Park. Revenue and finance, Mr. Maro.
Thank you, Mr. President. Number seven, under Revenue and Finance, General Fund Treasurer's Report. In your folder is a General Fund Treasurer's Report for the period July one through July thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen. Summary of accounts is as follows. West Banko Checking, one hundred sixty-five thousand, six hundred fifty-four dollars and twelve cents. PLGIT, ten thousand, three hundred twenty-five dollars and thirty-three cents. PSDLF, one thousand, four hundred eighty-five dollars, twenty-one cents. PA Invest, three hundred seventy dollars, eighty-one cents. West Banko Bank Public Investment Account, three million, one hundred seven thousand, six hundred ninety-seven dollars and twenty-eight cents. West Banko Certificates of Deposit, three million, five hundred twenty-one thousand, eight hundred thirty-nine dollars and sixty-eight cents. For a total cash and investments at July thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen, at six million, eight hundred seven thousand, two hundred eighty dollars and forty-three cents. I move that the Treasurer's Report for July two thousand and fifteen be approved as presented.
Second, Mr. Brazelli. Any questions? Any objections? The motion passes.
Number eight, General Fund Accounts Payable. In your folder are the General Fund Accounts Payable checks. The first batch includes checks one zero nine eight four three through one one zero one six one. Three hundred nineteen checks and nineteen wire transfers amounting to two million, six hundred ninety-one thousand, five hundred thirty-five dollars and seventy-four cents. Second batch includes checks one one zero one six two through one one zero one six six. Five checks amounting to three thousand, two hundred twenty-two dollars and eighty-eight cents. I move that the General Fund Accounts Payable checks be approved as presented.
Second, Mr. Garda. Any questions? Any objections? The motion passes.
Number nine, Capital Reserve Fund Treasurer's Report. In your folder is the Capital Reserve Fund Treasurer's Report for July. Total investments at July thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen, were two thousand, one hundred ninety-three dollars and sixty-five cents, with three hundred twenty-eight thousand, five hundred six dollars and thirty-two cents in the checking account for total funds available of three hundred thirty thousand, six hundred ninety-nine dollars and ninety-seven cents. I move the Capital Reserve Fund Treasurer's Reports for July two thousand and fifteen to be approved as presented.
Second.
Second.
Mrs. Panzera. Any questions? Any objections? The motion passes.
Number ten, Capital Reserve Fund Accounts Payable. In your folder is a Capital Reserve Fund Accounts Payable Report. Included are checks one four 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 through one four four five. Two checks amounted at three hundred five thousand, one hundred twenty-four dollars and twelve cents. I move that the Capital Reserve Fund Accounts Payable checks be approved as presented.
Second. Mr. Garda. Any questions? Any objections? The motion passes.
I would also like to ask that the following reports be made part of the minutes of this evening's meeting. As of June thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen, the Athletic Facility Report, the Helling Stadium Fund Report, the Investment Report, and the Investment Earnings Report. And as of July thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen, the Athletic Facility Report, the Helling Stadium Fund Report, the Investment Report, and the Investment Earnings Report.
Any objections? The report should be added to the minutes.
Number eleven, amended tax duplicate. In your folder is an amended two thousand and fifteen property and per capita tax duplicate based on actual assessed value certified by the Lawrence County Assessor's Office. I move that the amended duplicate be approved as presented.
Second. Mr. Brazelli. Any questions? Any objections? The motion passes.
Number twelve, tax forgiveness. Mr. Mazan. Robert Mazan purchased the property at eighty-five Summit Avenue, Elwood City, free and clear taxes out of December two thousand and thirteen judicial tax sale in Beaver County. Due to a procedural issue, Lawrence County tax claim is not made aware of the judicial sale and the tax exoneration. Therefore, I move that the school real estate taxes on the property at eighty-five Summit Avenue, tax ID number four zero dash zero zero seven nine zero zero be waived for the two thousand and seven through two thousand and twelve years contingent of future timely payments and that the business manager be authorized to notify Lawrence County tax claim of the board's action.
Second, Mr. Garda. Any questions? Any objections? The motion passes.
Number thirteen, tax forgiveness. First Baptist Church. I move that the taxes on First Baptist Church, purchase thirteen dash zero one four six zero zero and thirteen dash zero zero one seven zero zero located at two twenty Fountain Avenue, Elwood City be waived for the period two thousand and nine through two thousand and twelve.
Second, Mr. Brazelli. Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
Mr. Zeram. Is the taxes from thirteen and fourteen already paid? Or are they waived?
Yes. Now, then, what happened was they applied for an exemption on the property and it was exempted, so there were no taxes due on the property.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
The vote on the tax, the vote on taxes paid?
Not paid. They're not paid. No, two thousand and nine to two thousand and twelve were not paid. So, what we would be forgiving would be the one thousand, four seventy, seventy-four. That's a pretty good number, but it may be off a few, few dollars.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any objections? The motion passes.
Number fourteen, tax forgiveness. Ms. Gibson. I move the property tax forgiveness request submitted by Cynthia Givens on a property at four four one one Hollow Road be rejected.
Second. Mr. Garda. Any questions? Any objections? The motion passes.
Number fifteen, ACA Tax Track Software License Agreement. In your folder is a copy of the software license agreement between the district and AMCA Systems, LCC, at a cost of one thousand, eight hundred ninety-five dollars that will assist the district in its reporting requirements mandated by the Affordable Care Act. I move the agreement be approved pending final solicitor review and approval.
Second. Mr. Panzera. Any questions? Any objections? The motion passes.
Number sixteen, vision insurance rates. PSEA Health and Welfare Fund has submitted a vision insurance proposal that reflects a rate hold for the period October first, two thousand and fifteen, through September thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen. In your folder are applications outlining the terms and costs of the insurance. I move the applications to be approved as presented and the business manager be authorized to execute and submit them for further processing.
Second, Mr. Brazelli. Any questions? Any objections? The motion passes.
Number seventeen, approved signatory. I move that Mr. New Power be approved as a signatory on the Wampum tax account with Northwest Savings Bank.
Second. Mr. Panzera. Any questions? Any objections? The motion passes.
Number eighteen, repository tax sale. In your folder is a bid acceptance form for repository property for a five hundred dollar bid submitted by Rocko Irenio on a property located at seven thirty Wampum Avenue. I move the bid be accepted and let the business manager be authorized to execute and submit the form to the Lawrence County Tax Claim Bureau.
Second. Mrs. Panzera. Any questions? Any objections? The motion passes.
And that is all I have tonight under Revenue and Finance, Mr. Cortez.
Thank you, Mr. Morella. Personnel and Education, Mr. Garda.
Thank you, Mr. Cortez. Number nineteen, substitute nurse. In your folder are a list of substitute nurse, clerical cafeteria, and custodian personnel during the two thousand and fifteen, sixteen school year. I move the list be approved as presented.
Second, Mr. Brazelli. Any questions? Any objections? The motion passes.
Number twenty, memorandum of understanding. Elwood City Virtual Academy. In your folder is a memorandum of understanding between the district and the EADA providing for the continuation of the district's virtual calendar during the two thousand and fifteen, sixteen school year. I move the memorandum be approved as presented.
Second. Petrelli, any questions, Mr. Petrelli?
Um, was the, did that make you stay the same one from last year?
Yes.
Any other questions? Any objections? The motion passes.
Number forty-one, memorandum of understanding. Collective bargaining agreement obtained. In your folder is a memorandum of understanding between the district and the SEIU providing for the correction of missing or inaccurate contract language in the agreement for the period July first, two thousand and twelve, through June thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen. That was subsequently extended to June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen. I move the memorandum be approved as presented.
Second, Mr. Brazelli. Any questions?
I have a question. Is this the whole breakdown of the positions? Is that what this particular memorandum is referring to?
There are three sections in there. The sections where you see the numbers, when we have new hires.
Right.
There's a step-in process.
Okay.
What happened was when we did the previous memorandum, those step-in prices or costs did not get incorporated into the contract. So, that's what's represented there.
Okay.
And then, the other section is the summer, summer work. Again, those weren't addressed. It terminated with, I believe, the fourteen, fifteen school year, so there were an additional two years, and we just added the same cost, so there's no increase there. And then, last but not least, there was a transition from, the SEIU initially was with their own insurance carrier, where they provided them vision insurance. Then, we transitioned them to the Allegany County School Health Insurance Consortium, where the vision wasn't included, and we re-enrolled those people back into the vision program so that they were made whole. And that language in the existing contract did not reflect that transition back to the vision insurance we were providing. This just indicates and verifies what we're doing.
Okay. So, the scale and everything has stayed the same, we just have extended it?
It's just extended to the vision years, yes.
Okay.
Calculations have done exactly the same.
Any other questions? Any objections? The motion passes.
Number twenty-two, memorandum of understanding. Response to intervention facilitators and afterwards. In your folder is a memorandum of understanding between the district and the EADA providing for church or authority of five elementary response to intervention facilitators. I move the memorandum be approved as presented.
Second. Mr. Morella. Any questions?
Is this the one that we talked about, where we're waiting for the other positions to clear?
No, that was, those are A's.
Okay.
These are the tutors that they hire. Just a hundred and thirty-five days at a hundred dollars a day for math and reading.
And these are the elementary?
Yeah, one at Northside. There's a, there's a Merritt Ford at Northside, one tutoring at Northside, two at Perry, and two at Hartman.
Any other questions? Any objections? The motion passes.
Number twenty-three, ball coaches. In your folder is a list of coaches submitted by the athletic director for the two thousand and fifteen ball sports season. I move the list be approved as presented.
Second, Mr. Brazelli. Any questions?
Questions?
Mrs. Panzera.
These, the coaches for football, are they already approved positions to assist in varsity football?
Yes.
Okay, they just have to be approved, or the other coaches will be approved?
Approved, the other ones, because they started before the season, I mean, it's something.
I'm just, you're talking to me?
Yeah, I mean, somebody approved ahead of time because the season started on.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Any objections? The motion passes.
Number twenty-four, activities sponsors. I move that Angela Lansbury be hired as the senior physical choreographer for the two thousand and fifteen school year.
Second, Mr. Morella. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Is she also a crime writer? You knew somebody was gonna ask that.
Yeah. Are there any other questions? Any objections? The motion passes.
Number twenty-five, esteemed teacher. I move that Scott Setson Fan be hired as a team teacher on step one of the salary schedule of the agreement between the district and the Elwood City Area Education Association.
Second, Mr. Brazelli. Everybody. Any questions? Any objections? The motion passes.
Number twenty-six, FMLA lead. I move that Carol LaBardo, partner teacher of the Granite, a family medical leader for a twelve-week period effective October fifth, two thousand and fifteen, until January first, January fourth, two thousand and sixteen.
Second, Mrs. Panzera. Any questions? Any objections? The motion passes.
Number twenty-seven, Kelly Services Agreed. In your folder is an addendum to the agreement between Kelly Services and the district under ride substitute teachers for the two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen school year. I move the agreement be approved as presented.
Second, Mrs. Panzera. Any questions? Any objections? The motion passes.
Number twenty-eight, members. I move that the following staff members be named as member teachers for the two thousand and fifteen, sixteen school year at the applicable rate provided for in the collective bargaining agreement. Samantha Self, Benadino, Lee Kushba, Jennifer Byers, Chelsea Benedict, Ashley Gileadi, Ashley Coulter, Donovan Mase, Lisa Lommenberg, Scott Setson Fan, Matt Squatchless, Steve.
Second, Mr. Morella. Any questions? Any objections? The motion passes.
Number twenty-nine, game personnel official rates. In your folder are rates for game personnel and officials for the two thousand and fifteen, sixteen athletic season. I move the rates be approved as presented.
Second. Mr. Brazelli. Any questions? Any objections? The motion passes.
Number thirty, faculty manager. I move that Donovan Shall be hired as faculty manager for the two thousand and fifteen, sixteen school year.
Second, Mr. Brazelli. Any questions? Any objections? The motion passes.
I have a question on twenty-nine. Twenty-nine, game personnel official rates. What I have to explain, my dad's just been away for a long time.
It's, it's not just particular to him, it's, he's in a class of people that are getting the same depth.
So, okay. That's all.
Number thirty-one, instructional aide. I move that Cindy Lynn Wen be hired as a special education instructional aide under the terms and conditions of the collective bargaining agreement between the district and SEIU thirty-two BJ. D, I move that Alyssa Theodore be hired as special ed, instructional aid under the terms and conditions of the collective bargaining agreement between the district and SEIU thirty-two BJ. C, I move that Stephanie Delano be hired as a special education instructional aide under the terms and conditions of the collective bargaining agreement between the district and SEIU thirty-two BJ. D, I move that Jay Goldson be hired as a special education instructional aide under the terms and conditions of collective bargaining agreement between the district and SEIU thirty-two BJ. I move that Jenny Hay be hired as a special education instructional aide under the terms and conditions of the collective bargaining agreement between the district and SEIU thirty-two BJ. I move the appointments be approved as presented.
Second. Mrs. Petrelli. Any questions?
Yes, I have a question.
Mrs. Panzera.
Directed to Mr. Kerr. We have a contract. Is that still on?
He's working. Well, actually, they're in the SBA.
Any other questions? Any objections? The motion passes.
Number thirty-two, PA educator dot debt. In your folder is an agreement with Pennsylvania Educators Clearinghouse for the two thousand and fifteen, sixteen school year that outlines the responsibilities of each entity in the district utilization of the Clearinghouse website that was developed to accept employment application. I move the agreement be approved as presented.
Second, Mrs. Panzera. Any questions? Any objections? The motion passes.
Number thirty-three, junior. Progressive staff that completed six successful semesters are eligible for tenure. Ashley Gileadi, elementary guidance counselor, has met the requirements. Therefore, I move that tenure be granted.
Second, Mr. Brazelli. Any questions? Any objections? The motion passes.
Number thirty-four, resignation. Mrs. Sue Stevenson, instructional aide, has submitted her letter of resignation for the purpose of retirement effective immediately. I move the resignation be accepted.
Second, Mr. Panzera. Any questions?
Rock Hall, which?
Mr. Zeram.
Mr. Brazelli.
Yes.
Mr. Cortez.
Yes.
Mr. Garda.
Yes.
Mr. Morella.
Yes.
Mrs. Panzera.
Yes.
Mrs. Petrelli.
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson.
Abstain. The abstention is. The abstention is due to the fact she's my sister-in-law.
Motion passes.
Mr. President, I would like to personally and on behalf of the board thank Mrs. Stevenson for her dedication and years of service to the Elwood City Elementary School. Can't find a better name. That's all I have tonight. Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Garda.
I should mention that she started out as a teacher at the old, well, first she was at Wayne Township Schools, then went to Elport School, then took a few years off for child raising, and came back as an aide, and that was twenty-some years ago. So, she spent a lot of time at the district. Not quite Agar, but.
Thank you. Properties and Transportation, Mrs. Panzera.
Thank you, Mr. President. Faculty request. Lincoln High School band boosters are requesting permission to use Helling Football Stadium for their annual pie festival on Thursday, August twenty-seventh, two thousand and fifteen, from approximately three to ten p.m. The request includes use of the restrooms, concession stand, and ticket booths on home side. The Blue Band boosters also request the use of the visitor's side concession stand for the two thousand and fifteen home football games. B, the Elwood City Amateur Baseball Federation requests permission to use Free Hop Field and Sanders Field, the Little League baseball field, from August eighth through October thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen, for Meyer Pony and Little League fall ball. Field use will be arranged around the Lincoln High School fall ball. C, Elwood City Little Wolverines request permission to use Helling Stadium, including the football field, locker rooms, restrooms, concession stand near the baseball field, lights, sound system, and scoreboard for Sunday, October fourth, two thousand and fifteen, after one p.m. due to Saturday, October third, request being denied due to powder puff games. D, the Chamber of Commerce requests permission to use the Leslie Sabo Auditorium to show the movie It's a Wonderful Life for free to the public on Friday, December fourth, two thousand and fifteen, at approximately eight-thirty as a closure to light up night. I move that the request be approved as presented.
Second, Mr. Brazelli. Any questions? Any objections? The motion passes.
Security services. In your folder is an addendum to the agreement with Capital Asset Protection Incorporated that extends the contract for the two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen school year. Capital continue to provide sixteen hours of Saturday security service and Sunday services as needed at an hourly rate of fifteen dollars and sixty cents. I move that the amendment, the addendum, be approved as presented.
Second. Mr. Garda. Any questions? Any objections? The motion passes.
I have a question.
I'm sorry, Mr. Morella.
As needed, I mean, are they in there eight hours a day on Saturdays and Sundays?
Sixty hours, ten hours on Saturdays. And I guess when there are special functions on Saturday.
Even if there's no events or anything going on?
No. And then, they're okay on Sundays for. Just Saturday.
Okay, I mean, so, but I guess my question further is, are they here when there's nothing going on?
What's Saturday? Saturday night, maybe, or late Saturday.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Why? I'm just curious, why is?
I mean, just protection, just making sure things are locked up, doors are locked, lock in the halls. Do that break into before, you know, so? After practices are over, usually practices are running Saturdays all day here. And so, just a continuation of, you know, they do an eight-hour shift first. I think it's the same guy.
He's here for sixteen hours?
Yes, he wants to be here. So.
But how alert is he at?
He's, he's here.
But is he sleeping?
No, I don't think so.
I can't.
In the past, he was the same guy.
I can't stay awake sixteen hours anymore.
It's because you're a girl.
She loves it. Yeah, there you go.
That stuff, you're gonna start hogging his honor.
There you go.
Any other questions? Any objections? The motion passes.
Location agreement. In your folder is an agreement between FNT Enterprises and the district which authorizes FNT to film in Helling Stadium in connection with a program entitled Friday, I thought it was Friday Night Tykes.
Yeah, I did too.
Okay, it says Friday Night Tykes.
I'm sorry, it's Friday Night Tykes.
Okay. Friday Night Tykes, Western PA. I move the agreement be approved as presented.
Second, Mr. Garda. Any questions? Any objections? The motion passes.
License agreement. Human Services Center. In your folder is an agreement between the district and Human Services Center that authorizes the center to utilize district buildings to provide counseling services to district students. I move the agreement be. I move that the agreement be approved as presented.
Second, Mr. Garda, any questions? Any objections? Motion passes.
Nice question.
Yes.
Mr. Sarum, it says here I move the chain doors be approved as presented. That's a mistake.
I'm sorry. Yeah, we did as we used last year's, we just didn't put that out.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Student Affairs and Athletics, Mrs. Petrelli.
Thank you. Number thirty-nine, Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, FERPA. In your folder is the annual notice to parents and eligible students on the FERPA rights and state board policies for the two thousand fifteen sixteen school year. I move the notice be approved as presented.
Second, Mrs. Panzera, any questions? Any objections? Motion passed.
Number forty, Statement of Non-Discrimination. In your folder is the statement of non-discrimination for the two thousand fifteen sixteen school year. I move the statement be approved as presented.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Brazelli, any questions? Any objections? Motion passed.
Number forty-one, Glade Run Lutheran Services Agreement. In your folder is an agreement with Glade Run Lutheran Services that outlines the roles and responsibilities of each entity in providing educational services to the students referred to Glade Run by the district at costs ranging from twenty-one thousand three hundred and twenty dollars to thirty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty-two dollars. I move the agreement be approved as presented.
Second, Mr. Stevenson, question?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson.
I'm sure everybody's read in the news media, Glade Run's having some problems.
I was just gonna ask.
What should we maybe...
We find out in the...
I know what's been on the news. We don't have any students there right now. This is just in case we have to send somebody there. But the only thing I've heard on the news was that it was student issues. So they're investigating it, so that's all I really know.
Well, my point is, do we really want to send anyone then? If they're having issues? Let's put it this way, issues strong enough that the states involve...
We have alternatives.
Do we... Do we need to ask this right now? Or is it something that, if we need to do, liability speaking, should we go ahead or should we hold off?
Well, the issues, if you have an alternative, I don't know if any other facilities can send students and how likely it'll come up, if any, or not. But the concern liability, you know, is... Are we on notice that there's a problem there, we facing kids in a dangerous or potentially dangerous situation? From what we know, it doesn't appear to be that, you know... There's no supervisors or counselors that were involved from what we know. But who knows what comes out?
But by approving this, we wouldn't, since we have no students there...
We do, we have one check, we have one. I'm sorry.
We have one there. Okay, that changes. I was gonna say, if we have the agreement and we don't have anybody there, then it's kind of safer. But if we have somebody there, who's each of these?
I'm not a hundred percent sure, you know, who that student is or for what reason they're there, so that'd be more or less... If there's an alternative, in the meantime, that their price start up pretty soon also, so...
And without knowing more, I don't feel comfortable voting. I mean, this is a procedural problem they're having, they don't work it out fine. Because I understand that there is violence involved.
Would those persons that are involved be already on, been taken out of the situation? Do we even know that much?
All I got, all I know is what was on the news, and they're investigating it.
If we don't prove it, then the child has no place to go the first day of school. So we're kind of in a tricky situation at this moment. And I would like to think if there's somebody being put under investigation, they're being watched and then everything else is gonna maintain, you know, normalcy, but...
Sure, we know it's a placement or...
Our students?
Yeah.
They're all, they, yeah, they don't stay overnight there. Ours is impossible.
What happens to them, she has first day of schools in two weeks?
Yeah, well, what I'm saying is, I don't know if it'll be approved.
The student is placed there, is placed with the IP, probably behavioral. So if he's placed with the IP, we have a obligation to provide that. You have to, Leslie's gonna have to repeat the IP, the IP to change his placement. I don't know when we're nearby, it... I mean, we're responsible, whatever their services are, we're responsible to provide us that, you know, whatever that means, cost plus.
It's an autistic program of the students, so...
I'm uncomfortable opening it just because if it's under investigation, then nobody's doing anything now. I don't know what happened, we don't know whether it's true or false, there's only allegations being made at this point. But anything that's going on at this point, I mean, I can't imagine that there is anything going on at this point. I mean, I think we need to, of course, monitor it, but I don't know what else you would do with that student, and that's...
Do we have any other program? I'm sorry, I missed.
We need less or two.
I mean, we don't really place kids out unless they have to be placed out. We're not, we have a ton of programs here, you know, and for them to get placed out is... That's the place they have to be, you know, through the IP team. That's, you know, because, you know, the least restricted environment, we have to put them out.
Yeah.
But...
Understand that, but if he's in a violent situation, I'd probably have to go that either.
There is, the student has an IP bond too, which means, you know, parents have to agree to another placement. That's before we can do anything.
Is there the possibility that we can't, if it turns out that it's not a safe environment, that we can cancel? Well, if the parent is aware of this, which you would think that since everybody knows about this on TV, and they have to come forward saying, I don't want my student there, I mean, I don't know whether it's something that we should, like, put a feeler out and see if they want, or if that's not a good call.
It was a residential, that there was abuse amongst the kids. I think I heard. Yeah, I think that it was the residential students that were... Because they were apparently supervised for some period of time. Which I don't think is... There's been no allegations against the staff or something.
The one newscast I heard said it was a group problem, so...
Residential.
Residential.
Situation is, because we are obligated to do this, if we approve, the parents have to agree.
Sure, they could call others later and say, I don't want my kid there, then we can be the IP, so we have alternative, alternatives.
Can we look at not placing any other students in there until it's resolved?
Yeah, we won't, unless, yeah. Get placed there.
All right, are there any other questions or comments? We need a roll call, bud.
You want me to form a request here?
I know, I'm, it's our, Howard, please. Mr. Sarum?
Yes, sir. Mr. Cortez?
Yes.
Mr. Garda?
Yes.
Mr. Morella?
Yes.
Mrs. Panzera?
Yes.
Mrs. Petrelli?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
No.
Mr. Brazelli?
Yes.
The motion passes. It noted that parents will be informed and they can make a decision. And in the meantime, our administration will be looking for alternatives.
Okay.
Number forty-two, Beaver Valley IUEXL Agreement. In your folder is an agreement with Beaver Valley Intermediate Institute to provide English as a second language services for the two thousand fifteen sixteen school year at an estimated cost of forty-nine thousand three hundred and sixty-two dollars. I move the agreement be approved as presented.
Second, Mrs. Panzera, any questions? Any objections? Motion passes.
Number forty-three, Keystone Smiles AmeriCorps. In your folder is an agreement with Keystone Smiles AmeriCorps that provides guidelines, rules, and responsibilities of the AmeriCorps workers program for the two thousand fifteen sixteen school year. I move the agreement be approved as presented.
Second, Mr. Garda, any questions? Mrs. Panzera.
We pay them, correct?
Yes.
And how many, we just have the one?
One.
But isn't it just a partial that we pay and then Ameri?
Yeah.
We only pay a small slice of half.
Yeah, I think it was ten. They get like their loans taken care of.
It's a great program.
Number forty-four, tuition students.
I'm sorry, hang on, is there any other questions? Okay, any objections? Motion passes. Continue, Mrs. Petrelli.
I'm sorry. Number forty-four, tuition student. I move that Tyler Knox be accepted as a tuition student at Hartman Intermediate School for the two thousand fifteen sixteen school year.
Second, Mrs. Stevenson, any questions?
Yes, what's the story here?
This is a Beaver Falls resident that has been in our program for seven years, and the guardians would like to keep him here because he's familiar with the kids and familiar with the school, and he's most comfortable.
Okay, he's a standard student, aren't you?
I don't think we want to discuss it too much. We don't want to discuss student.
You what?
We don't want to discuss student affairs in a public, too, much.
Is the administration coming?
Oh, he's been, yeah.
He's been here for...
Two years.
Any other questions? Any objections? Motion passes.
Number forty-five, Harris School Solutions Support Agreement. In your folder is an agreement with Harris School Solutions to provide support student information system support through September thirtieth, two thousand fifteen, as the district continues its transition to Tyler Technology Software. I move the agreement be approved as presented.
Second, Mr. Garda, any questions? Any objections? Motion passes.
Number forty-six, Helen Stadium Seating Recommendation. In your folder is a proposal submitted by the athletic director to modify the reserved seating section of Helen Stadium for home football games. I move the proposal be approved as presented.
Second, Mr. Brazelli, any questions? Any objections? Sorry. Motion passes.
Number forty-seven, Athletic Expense Report. In your folders are the Athletic Fund Treasurer's Report for June and July two thousand fifteen that reflect total expenses of three thousand one hundred and thirty-seven dollars and forty-eight cents and twenty-four thousand nine hundred and seven dollars and sixty-one cents, respectively. I move the athletic expense reports be approved as presented.
Second, Mrs. Panzera, any questions? Any objection? Motion passes.
Number forty-eight, Activity Fund Quarterly Report. In your folder is a quarterly activity report that reflects a balance of seventy-one thousand six hundred and ninety-seven dollars and seventy-one cents as of June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen. I move the quarterly activity report be approved as presented.
Second, Mr. Brazelli, any questions? Any objections? Motion passes. Thank you, Mrs. Petrelli. Recognition, communications, Mr. Stevenson.
Thank you. Mr. Morella, is this to be read?
Yes.
I have here, the Pennsylvania Department of Revenue offers a property tax rent rebate program that benefits eligible homeowners and seniors in the Commonwealth. If you are a homeowner and are age sixty-five or older, widow, age fifty or older, or a person with disabilities, age eighteen or older, and have an income less than thirty-five thousand dollars, excluding half of your social security income that you're allowed to claim, then you're eligible for a property tax rebate of between two hundred and fifty dollars and six hundred and fifty dollars. If you're a renter and are age sixty-five or older, widow, and age fifty or older, or a person with disabilities, age eighteen or older, and have an income less than fifteen thousand, excluding half of your social security income, then you're eligible for a rent rebate between five hundred and six fifty. If you're not already taking advantage of this program, I strongly urge you to apply. If you have any questions about the program, or you or a family member's eligibility, contact him. And you can contact him at morellamat@yahoo.com, four seven two four six seven four one two oh two. Also, property tax rebate application forms and assistance are available at no cost from the Pennsylvania Department of Revenue, District Offices, local area agencies, independent agents, senior senators, and state legislators' offices. So if you can't get ahold of him, call Jared Gibbs. Right?
Yeah, thank you.
Following Elwood City Area School District staff members applied and received the ECO Lab grant from NALCO. Jack Willem Burner, Baldr, excuse me, Jack. First, it tells to supplement reading and language, you get fifteen hundred dollars. Mandy Zachal, I think, got a thousand for sensory integration materials. Anita Hand got one thousand five hundred and twenty-one off of the Lego We Do Construction Sets. Jennifer Byers got a thousand dollars for sensory integration materials. And Ed Abohman got a thousand dollars for sensory integration materials. Lisa Flug, Pam McQuire, and Gwen McQuire got fifteen hundred dollars for Versatiles to supplement reading and language. Now, Sherry Shear got fifteen hundred dollars for Hands-on Science and Literacy STEM Project. Diane Lecter and Jane Winhurst got two thousand nine dollars, I probably muckled that, for a Garden to Learn project. Brittany Severin got one thousand three hundred and eighty-three dollars for critical thinking and problem-solving math classroom project. Debbie Wish got thirteen hundred and sixty-four for Impact Program and Tor and Resilience Curriculum Project. I'm not sure what that would be. Jolene Surick got fifteen hundred for TI eighty-four plus CE graphing calculators. And Nina Knob, that's her sister, by the way, she got fifteen hundred too for the same thing. And Keith Colini got three thousand for A-plus education proposal. Total funding through the grants that I just listed, nineteen thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars. Congratulations, the staff members, for taking the initiative to apply and go after these available funds. It really is a great thing. Now, from the Community Foundation, addressed to Joe Mancini. Calvin Presbyterian Church on Crescent Avenue here in Ellen donated ninety dollars. It's signed by Kimberly Duncan, the financial coordinator of the Community Foundation for Western PA, Eastern Ohio. I have nothing more to mention.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. New business. Hey, sir, Helen Stadium Insurance Claim, did you read that motion, please?
Helen Stadium Insurance Claim. In your file is a property damage release form applicable to the water loss claim in Helen Stadium. I move that the settlement be approved as proposed and that the business manager be authorized to execute and return the release.
Second, Mr. Gardner, any questions? Any objections? Motion passes. Thank you, Mrs. Panzera. Anything else on the new business? On behalf of the board, I'd like to welcome Mr. Scott Sensenbaum, our new esteemed teacher. We're very excited about this program, new Fab Lab, and this is something that's, we can't say how big it is for the school district. And we've always worked for the longest time trying to make Elwood City in a changing education environment where technology plays more and more of a role, we always wanted to be on the forefront, now we can say we are.
Welcome, thank you.
Thank you for having me. We'll keep you there.
Congratulations.
Any other questions, comments?
Yes, I apologize for not being here, my, when you were interviewing, and, and was in a position where I had to say to her, "Is this who we want?" And she said, "Yeah, that's him over there." Oh, okay.
Well, it's nice to meet you as well.
Let me put it to you this way, when the educators tell us you're who we want, and we do trust our educators, certainly we welcome your board.
Do my best to make them look, make them look good.
Because he won't get his bonuses if you don't.
Yeah, Scott, we don't want to look good, we want you to make our kids look good.
I mean, the district as a whole.
Questions for the visiting?
You know, Rob DiMaggio, it was on the facility request, what was the date for the Powerpuff Girls, in October?
Third.
Was it October third? Okay, thanks.
Okay. Any other questions for the board?
I have a couple, I wouldn't, um, this, this, um, program that you're, I guess it's actually a TV?
Yeah, documentary series.
Documentary series. Can you tell us a little bit about what you're trying to capture?
Yeah, we're following several football teams in the Mighty Mike age group, and so we're gonna be, for Elwood City, we're exclusively filming a set number of games that are gonna occur here, on Saturdays at six PM on August twenty-second, August twenty-ninth, and October third. So we'll be there a couple hours before the game starts, games usually run about two hours, sort of get set up, and we're pretty exclusively just documenting the story of that game, how it unfolds.
I'll make sure you have that date, October third, I'll change to October fourth, that's Sunday.
Oh, did you?
Yeah, that's what I think we just voted, yeah.
Okay.
So, you'll be filming the girls playing.
No.
That's probably more violent.
It's much more violent. Can you tell us when you expect it to be released?
In the spring.
In the spring, something to notify.
Right, I would say, it's hard to tell, it's sorted through the network, that'd say March, April, May, but we're good about communicating to the people we work with, letting everyone know when it's on.
Wonderful.
Thanks for being interested in Elwood.
Of course, I'd like to thank you.
Yeah, that's my question, you know, how are we chose?
Beaver County as a whole. The football program here, as you guys all know, is very unique. We've done two seasons in Texas, and after those aired, there were different leagues all across the country who reached out to us and said, "Hey, if you like Texas, you know, come check out our program." You know, and some were better than others, but just the history and the legacy here at Beaver County when it comes to the football, the community, you can't tell the story of the football team, also tell them the story of the town, that all sort of made it like a perfect fit for us. Yeah. It's gonna be a fun season, and when I'm here, we're all here until the first week of November.
Are you, are you just originally from all over, or you just...
Yeah, we have some people from Los Angeles, some from Texas, I'm from New York City, we're all staying in corporate houses.
Here in Elwood.
We're in Cranberry.
Okay.
It's actually really nice, it's brand-new corporate housing, this turnkey furniture all put together, it's great.
Oh, it's tough.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
We got Danny's Hotel down on eighteen.
Same, Cranberry.
Danny's Hotel.
Yeah, that's a different one, yeah, exactly.
Bring your own house.
Yeah, it's a good sign. Would I be getting the location agreement signed from you, Mr. President, after the meeting?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. President, thank you.
I do have one other concern I'd like to bring back up, and I had mentioned it Monday, and I was actually at kindergarten orientation this morning and was speaking to a few parents, and there's already concern about the class sizes in third and fourth grade, I don't know if, um, Mr. Mancini heard any of it, they've already started knocking down your doors about the twenty-nine in the classroom and, you know, how it's, how we took a teacher from them, and I'll leave it at that. Does anybody else have concerns about there being so many in one versus leaving the other one with, like, twelve, fifteen?
Mr. Gardner, be interested here with you.
Yeah, I do. I, I think, you know, I said I think those kids, like, twelve to thirteen that live in the classroom, doesn't do much for them, I think they need to be integrated with the other kids.
I mean, it does spark a little bit more of a, a drive to learn, you know, and push to kind of do what they're doing. I don't know, I'm not an educator, so I, I just know that when my sons with somebody else, they tend to rival each other, you know, push each other a little further than try a little harder, but, like I said, I was there this morning and I had three different parents come up to me and say something about it, and that's just, you know, that was my first day out, so I, I don't know, I don't, I mean, I'm just asking because I was asked.
We have that discussion, I mean, I know that that, the way that that's been set up with those group of students that rotate from teacher to teacher to get that intensive help, you know, test scores have shown that they've been pretty successful, passed, I'm not sure about this last test because that pretty much nobody was, you know, let everybody was successful, so, um, I think that's the reason that it was set up to begin with was to bring those students when they get to that third and fourth grade, which reading is critical, to bring them up, and I know it affects, uh, other class sizes, and that's one of the, uh, you know, downsides of doing it. Like I said before, there's that possibility that some more students may go into that other class based on the first couple of weeks, as teachers get to evaluate those kids and say, "Hey, now this kid may benefit from that more intense," so that may lower some class size, you know, after the school year starts. I'm not saying it can, it will happen, but it's, it's a possibility.
That's hard on kids too, because then they're switching teachers, you know, I mean, like, switching home rooms.
Best for a kid academically to try to give them the help they need, to get them caught.
With all, all the tutors and the aides that we have, can't they push in, like, you know, take those groups and, and, you know...
They do both, they push in and pull students, um, so...
Such a, I mean, I think, what is it, is it thirteen and twenty-nine? That's huge, I mean, it just seems like it could be just a little more balanced.
You gotta also consider that those thirteen are probably the most needy, and are demanding as much as almost twenty-nine get their ability, so, um, that's why we kind of started that program, to kind of catch those kids up. We get, um, third grade reading, many more, that test score, that ELA score is almost double for a school, so if they're not reading by third grade, or they're not, I mean, that's, so that's the, you know, that's the, the linchpin, and all the studies show that that's so, um...
That's what I told them, I mean, why it's being done, but it's just hard to, those numbers are just so grossly different that...
I would, you know, maybe the option is just, let's see, you know, let's, kids start to falter in that larger class and things start getting, you know, where a teacher can't handle it, then we, you know, look at other options, but, uh, you know...
I just wondered if anybody else has heard, anybody said anything to anybody else yet, or, that, I, I probably wouldn't have if I wasn't at kindergarten orientation this morning, but I, it started.
I heard from a teacher, shall we say, in Big Shot, and I heard upsetting as a cause of the teacher. Now, they're not worried about the kids that were...
Does this affect mainstream anymore? When you're pulling those kids out?
These aren't specialized kids.
Yeah.
So he doesn't have anything to do with it?
No, the specialized students are in the other classes.
Okay, I didn't know they had...
Yeah, none of them are specialized, they're students that are just struggling, right.
I think we can just keep a close eye on it, follow it through, see how it works out. As Mr. Mancini said, those numbers could change, but the main reason is if we haven't screwed the kids into the toxic attention.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think if you take, say, what, seven or eight kids out of that class, and twenty-nine class put them with the other thirteen kids that need that extra help, I mean, are they gonna be getting that's good education if you put those kids out? You're kind of stuck on that reading on the basics, I guess, instead of getting advanced, you know, I, I don't know, I guess the only way to balance it would be split up those thirteen kids and put the rest of the kids with them that have two classes of the same size, but I mean, I think putting seven or eight kids out of that twenty-nine and with the kids that need the extra help, that would be kind of, there's a disadvantage to them, I think.
I've had this conversation on the opposite end, with putting, my son with math is beyond, and, you know, some of the teachers don't want to push ahead with them because they say, "Well, these kids aren't there yet," so we still have those kids in some of those other classes, and, you know, we really need, the differentiating, I never say the word, right?
Differentiated.
Instruction, and I mean, that's where that comes into play, because you have that twenty-some kids, thirty kids that are ready to move forward, where the bulk of them are all standing still, and then you have that little one at the end, so, you know, I understand what you're saying, but you have those ones there too, so, I mean, sometimes some of those kids, like I said, kind of, you know, get those other ones a little more motive.
Then we hire another teacher, split them all.
Split them off, separate them.
The other thing, I think, eleven make twenty-nine students in a class is too many, especially if there's an age in it.
I think there's an age in it, of course.
Get it up around thirty-five, yeah, we got too many kids in one class, but eleven make twenty-nine, if you have kids that aren't dressing up very, or as you say, a bunch.
Or a bunch. Just wanted to mention, it's just...
Okay.
I just wanted to bring this up, okay, I brought up, uh, several years ago, and since it's in the news, I'm bringing it up again, no homework policy, what makes the K three four?
A lot.
No home, for the kids.
Once there'd be a policy that there is no homework.
There's no homework.
Okay. I don't know if I agree with that, I, I think some of those kids need that reinforced one.
K three four.
I'm reading it up.
You want to look into the research behind it, or do you want to, do you want to, the administration to...
You know, some of the newer research.
Does that include spelling words? Does that include, like, spelling, because, like, spelling, I don't even think a spelling word is homework, that's kind of just, you gotta do it.
Part of the language.
Right, and they, and they have reading every night, like, kindergarten, they send home, it's in the home, and they read twenty minutes.
No, I'm not saying, you know, don't read with your kids, so, I'm not saying structured homework. Take, let's take a look at it.
Yeah, I told you, Mark, we're not homework.
How was it that I tried to do it on this field? Or I didn't do it?
Any other items for the board? If not, I will enter...
This is a clear...
A second.
Congratulations.
Very much, thank you, very much.
I didn't know that, I thought, I was saying, I don't have any, any...
Excited kids, not, not, yeah, it's exciting.
So you don't want to...
That's not, that's not...
No, not this year.
Congratulations.
Board, okay, congratulations.
You're standing, girl.
I'm a little nervous, because we're twenty-five.
I'm like, 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 I'm